What a great, what a great introduction. Call it or order the St. Joseph City Council Meeting of December nineteenth. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, public comments. Anyone wishing to address the council on items not on the agenda, please step forward. It's up to you.
Is that what she said? I didn't hear you.
Public comments. Three minutes on anything not on the agenda. Name an address, please.
Mary Kay Hooning, Saint Jo- ninety-eight fifty, Saint Jenny Lane, Saint Joseph. This September, the city will be implementing a mandatory water meter replacement program. The key word here is mandatory. Why are we installing technology with no right to opt out? Homeowners have the ultimate authority to decide what technology is installed in their homes, not utilities, whom government-protected monopolies prevents residents from choosing a competing utility provider. Smart meters are surveillance devices and violate our Fourth Amendment right to privacy in our home guaranteed under the United States Constitution. All portions of the political spectrum agree. It's about individual freedom of choice and residents' basic property rights. ACLU of Minnesota protects our right to privacy. They actively promote reasonable uses of technology that enhance privacy and freedom while opposing those uses of technology which undermine our freedoms and move us closer to a society dominated by surveillance. Smart meters typically overcharge and inaccurately represent usage when compared with reliable, accurate analog meters. Smart meters and the smart grid risk national security and reliability of the electricity supply by opening a new portal for hackers and others who wish to dispute these services, disrupt these services. This is a major cybersecurity problem created by smart meters. Sustainable development is the proposed utopian New World Order. By, but by design, its goals can never be achieved. We expect continuous regulations, rising costs, loss of liberty, and diminished sovereignty. By continuing to follow the goals of sustainable and smart growth in the current comprehensive plan, you, the City Council, Planning Commission, EDA, Park Board, et cetera, will continue to take our voices away. I've sat in meetings and have seen the regional control league of cities making decisions for the city that use simply rubber stamp. I would highly recommend amending the current comprehensive plan so the people of City of Saint Joe don't lose all their voices and liberties. Thank you.
Thank you. Item three, consent or approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion and second on the approval of the agenda. Any changes or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, consent agenda.
I'll move, but would like to pull F.
Second, motion and second on consent agenda. We'll pull F and talk that separately. So four A through E and G. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Four F, surplus property within the fire department. Jeff or, or?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to.
Jeff or Jeff or?
Yeah. It's Jeff.
I like that.
Too bad you're not named Jeff.
You owe me so many.
So I just want to make sure.
Yeah, let me maybe tee it up a little bit.
Yep.
You know, I guess, you know, equipment has been operated by the fire department for many years. And one piece of equipment, namely the snowmobile, it looks like it's got a limited life, looks like it's in really, really tough shape. But I wanted to possibly give the council the option, if it cared to, to extend the opportunity for more bids or more quotes. We got one. But if there's any desire to go longer, we can post it on the city's website and see if there's others that may interested in purchasing that. So we have one for five hundred and it's in tough shape. It's a nineteen ninety. And it's been hard, it's been in bad state of repair. I understand. It's been hard to keep working. So just wanted to provide, just ask you if you'd like us to continue that. Otherwise, the other equipment, the sled and the trailer, that I think is going to be put to good use with the Rockville Fire Department that we can use when, when necessary. So that's kind of all I have on that. If anyone else wants to add in?
John, you want to?
No, with the fire board, we kind of discussed it. Would cost a lot just to, is it right, Jeff? And quote me if I'm wrong, fifteen thousand to twenty thousand even to replace it or to repair it, correct?
To replace it roughly, that was the price they were getting to find something that.
You know, we talked about it. They used it four times in twenty-one years. That sound about right. At least if it's going, the sled and everything else, five hundred dollars going to Rockville, we can still utilize it in Saint Joe if we need it. So, you know, personally, I say I wouldn't keep it open. Sell it. Get rid of it. That's my thoughts.
Jeff?
There's a, so Rockville, they already have a snowmobile, so they were looking for something like this. So yes, they offered five hundred for the trailer and the rescue sled alone with the intent that we can use it for mutual aid. The snowmobile, we went separately and someone from the Snowjoes, who was part of the group that donated it to us, is willing to give us an additional five hundred dollars just for the snowmobile. Again, all of this has been donated to us over the years from the Snowjoes. So to make things clean, that's why we went with some kind of dollar amount versus just trying to donate it somewhere, one way or the other. That answers any questions?
Well, normal procedure for a surplus property within the city is to put it out for, you know, bids to the public. I mean, that's just normal procedure.
And I would be fine with the snowmobile part of it. You know, the rescue sled and the trailer, that's still going, it's going to another fire department that's going to use it. And we have potential of using it. So I really, I don't know, that's kind of a unique piece of equipment. No one's really going to have a use for it except for in the rescue part of it. And they really kind of need the trailer so they can help both units to make it a complete unit. So if you would want to extend the snowmobile part of it, I guess I would be fine with it. I don't know if there is any other interest to it or if you're going to make any more.
Yeah, I have no idea what shape that's the moment.
It's tough. It's.
I?
So, so is the, is the question separating snowmobile from trailer and rescue sled?
Right.
Is that what you're asking?
I think that's what Jeff was getting at is maybe.
So that we can move forward with trailer and rescue sled as surplus property moving at the, what is it?
Rockville.
And then disposing of the snowmobile as surplus equipment? Or?
Well, he's got a bid for both.
Well, what I'm saying is there are two separate bids.
Right. With the snowmobile, we could leave it open. We could advertise on our website. And if any additional quotes come in, that'd be the existing quote.
Except the sale, the trailer and sled, as it is today, extend the snowmobile to see if there's anything, any other options.
Exactly.
Is, is that what I understand?
So moved. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
So the motion by Kevin, and I'll second that. So just, so I'm clear. The motion is to go forward with trailer and sled to Rockville, open, continue the surplus equipment on the snowmobile. Do you want to put a date on, like, two weeks, a month?
Two weeks.
Okay, two weeks, and then we'll figure out what to do at that point. Like, the next meeting, first meeting in January or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Throw it on the site and see what happens.
Is that okay? Everybody okay with that? Motion and second. That motion, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion on four F does indeed carry.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Item five, consideration of adoption of Resolution twenty-two sixty-one, the final budget. Laura, you got this again?
Yeah, I really don't have much to report on. It's just kind of follow-up from the truth and taxation hearing that we had at the last meeting. So there have been no changes since then. So I guess I'll just kind of open it up if you had questions, concerns, or what you would like to do.
The only thought that I, I have about that is at the end of the year, we get a, Lori threw, I don't forget that to everybody, those numbers.
We did not.
Okay. Anyway, the crux of the matter is at the end of the year, there's usually a surplus of revenue versus expenditures. And from what I calculated on what you projected or, you know, round, ballpark figure was two hundred thousand. Okay? And so normally, you know, we roll that over into the three ninety fund, which is the rainy day fund for catastrophes and everything else, right?
Yeah, so the difference is, is actually about seventy-five dollars, or seventy-five thousand of what my projections are, just on rough estimates. So revenues over expenditures, I think we will end with a slight surplus. But yes, you're correct that we put that in the fund three ninety then.
Okay, considering that might happen and to, you know, somewhat alleviate the, I mean, seventy-five thousand, that's what, two percentage points roughly? If the numbers haven't changed since we.
One and a half.
One and a half. To apply that to this year's budget, to offset it just a little bit.
Versus putting it in the rainy day fund?
What's that?
Versus putting it in the three ninety fund for next year? What, what would be the difference? You have just, like, seventy-five grand, you're asking?
It's probably going to be around twenty-five dollars on a home valuing around two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an effort shown by the council, or, you know, my thoughts anyway, to, you know, address it and try something, considering the, you know, the big tax increase and the valuation increase and all that. So to me, that would show some type of effort to the council, to the constituents of the city that, you know, we are looking, you know, our rainy, our three ninety fund is healthy.
What, what is in our three ninety? What is in the three ninety?
It's right around four hundred and fifty thousand right now. We do have some projects that are coming up that we kind of have slotted using that. For instance, right-of-way acquisition for east, or the Elm Street.
And is any of the three ninety fund used for police camera stuff or not?
Some. We also have some ARPA money dedicated to that, but there are some from three ninety that's earmarked for that.
Do we have an, well, and again, I know these are speculation numbers, but how much, how much is dedicated versus the seventy-five grand kind of thing?
I remember from the top of my, just going from memory, I think what we had dedicated in the three ninety fund versus not used, I think there's maybe, like, over the next few years, there's probably about two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand that we did not have set for a different, for some project. We are allocating a little bit of the LGA into that three ninety fund to kind of help offset some of those unknown surprise expenses that are coming up.
Yeah.
And so for the twenty twenty-three budget, we have eighty-five thousand of the LGA marked to go into the fund three ninety.
Okay. Yeah, my concern is that the unexpected expenditures.
Right.
That we go too low. And I don't know what that low number is. I appreciate Bob. I mean, it makes good sense. If we can spend it now, absolutely. I'm a little worried about, number one, kind of the economic conditions we're at right today and, and some of the unknowns we've had in the past. To keep that fund relatively stable. And I don't know what stable means, two hundred grand or four hundred grand. I don't know what that means. I'm honest.
What's, what's the lowest you've ever seen it?
Yeah, that's a good question.
We started this fund, like, doing, putting the money in there just a few years ago, so.
What's the lowest it's been in that two years?
Probably less than a hundred thousand. We used to only put, like, excess debt money in there. So we typically just levy what we need for debts. And so there's usually not very much in the residual once a bond is paid off.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that, that fund was really low. We couldn't really use it for, to offset these projects and still, until we started funding it a little bit with this excess budget from the general fund or.
It gives us a little flexibility. At the same time, it's setting aside funds that we may use for other important things like driving down taxes and some of the things. But it gives us the flexibility of later on in the year, something pops up like, you know, Morningside, that we have to actually fund, we have some available funds to do it. So I don't know, again, it's a balance kind of thing.
I mean, I don't disagree with the council at all, so I like your idea. Does it have to be all seventy-five or do you split it? And still put some in three, three ninety? Still put some towards the budget this year?
I think this twenty twenty-three budget is a unique budget.
Sure.
Because of the, I mean, it's more so than I've seen in, you know, twenty-five, thirty years.
It's different.
And I think it would benefit the city overall with reducing the bite on their citizens, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I'm for it. I like your idea.
I think maybe what would make it a little cleaner, because my estimates of what I had revenues over expenditures, those are kind of estimates. I don't know exactly where it's going to fall. I think if, it would make it cleaner if we just say that, you know, part of the LGA that we have slotted in, that of that eighty-five thousand from the LGA that we have going into three ninety, if there's a desire to pull some of that back into the general fund to bring down the levy.
Can we dedicate a certain amount?
Mm-hmm.
Like, can we dedicate seventy-five grand?
You could.
Yeah.
I'll move.
So that would make it a little cleaner, I think.
Yeah.
I'll move to coincide with Lori's number, whatever you want to call it.
Moving seventy-five.
To address the preliminary or the budget that we have in front of us right now.
So, and I'm going to, I'm going to.
It's seventy-five thousand.
I'm going to, okay. So I was going to say, we're going to clarify seventy-five grand out of LGA fund that we can take back to dedicate to bring taxes down a little bit. That, is that clear enough?
Yeah. That's second.
Motion and second. Let's use potential LGA funds, drive down seventy-five grand in taxes. Anybody have any questions or concerns with that? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we really do have to, twenty, why? Bob, that was a great suggestion, dude.
Great job.
Are you kidding me? No, we still have to do the budget, right? That was just like on top of the budget, like an amendment to.
Yeah, no, we have the resolution.
Yeah, we, we still have to do the resolution.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash oh-six-one, adopting the final twenty-two-three budget, five-year capital plans, and final twenty-two-two tax levy, levy collectible in twenty-two-three.
Second.
And that's adjusting that seventy-five thousand, right?
Yeah, with the, with the seventy-five grand adjustment. Yes, thank you. So Resolution twenty-two twenty-two sixty-one with a seventy-five grand adjustment. Questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion does indeed carry. Thank you, everyone, councillors and Lori. Staff too. Great job this year. Item six, establishing cannabinoid, who's that?
Me.
Kayla?
Yep.
Okay.
So, good evening. Before you is a draft ordinance that would regulate the sale of cannabinoid products in the city of Saint Joseph. If you recall, the council had approved a moratorium on the sale of these products on July eighteenth, and that moratorium would be for up to a year. And council also directed staff to, to draft an ordinance and to see what other area cities were doing. And so the one before you is one initially received from the city of Saint Cloud. We did have Sudegi review the ordinance and we kind of pared it down a little bit to, to comply with what Saint Joseph, what our needs are. So the ordinance would establish a licensing process on the sale of hemp-derived THC food and beverages in the city. And it also addresses licensing and rules, sales management controls, identification requirements, compliance, and license fees. The licensing process would be consistent with both liquor and tobacco in that the police department would conduct a background check for initial applicants or transfers of licenses. Compliance checks would also be conducted like that at liquor and tobacco establishments. Licenses would be annually from January first to December thirty-first. And then this ordinance would also repeal ordinance twenty-two-two dash zero-one-two, which established the moratorium. So before you this evening is consideration of adopting ordinance twenty-two dash zero-one-two, establishing ordinance six-one-four, and then also approving the subsequent summary publication.
So I have some questions.
Let's make a motion move first.
I'll move.
And I'll second. Motion and second on the twenty-twenty-twelve, twelve, twenty-two-twelve ordinance. We have questions. Kevin?
So what if the council or this particular councillor just doesn't want the sale of CBD in our city? Are we required to allow businesses to sell it because the state legislature passed it?
No.
One way we can control that is by putting it into a zoning area. I mean, this, this doesn't have no zone or nothing. It's just, you can have it.
We can continue the moratorium indefinitely.
Well, we can, yeah. But, I mean, in order to, I mean, you can't totally disallow it.
Yes, you can. Yes, you can.
Well, no, you have to, you have to provide space for it somewhere.
No, you don't.
You don't.
Well, then I'm, I misunderstood where the laws are on that. I mean, we can't.
It allows us to do it. It doesn't force us to do it.
So my point is, when I started this discussion, is why does the city even need to allow the sale of it? People in this town want to go buy it, whether they're students or residents, let them go to Saint Cloud. We don't need to sell this unless someone's going to say, well, we're eliminating a business opportunity for a business, or we're going to collect permit fees for our budget, you know, those kinds of licensing fees are going to have a big impact on our budget. But I don't see why we, I don't see why we need to allow the sale of it. And it's more of a rhetorical point than it is.
I mean, I'm, I'm either yea or nay, it doesn't matter. But the whole, I'm going to go back to what I know as law on these situations, way back when, I don't know what year it was, but we had to zone in for a adult entertainment business. So basically, I mean, you can have an adult entertainment business in Saint Joe, you know, basically a strip club or whatever the case may be. But it's zoned according where the only place that this is allowed would be in an industrial area. And it's got buffers and everything else, you know, so it's way out in the swamp somewhere. And I don't know, I don't think the law has changed on that issue because we had to develop an ordinance when there was a threat or whatever you want to call it way back in the day of that coming into town. So then we found out through legal research that you can't totally disallow a use, a business use in town, but you can, you know, put it in a zoning area or a buffer zone or whatever, you know, and you still comply with the law, but it's in a very undesirable location where it can be allowed.
Well, I wouldn't want to deny the sale of CBD in the city if someone, a business is going to sue us because they can't sell it.
Right.
Right. I wouldn't want to go down that.
And, and like I said, I don't think that law has changed. So I wish our lawyer was here or we could, you know, ask that question to a lawyer.
I want to look at it more. So.
That's, I'm, I'm on the impression that we have to have our.
Just because we have a moratorium until June or July, I want to just have more conversation about it.
Let's have some more discussion tonight.
Yeah.
Okay?
Go. So, you know, my question is, I don't disagree with you, Kevin. This is Saint Cloud's, correct?
Yeah.
The original template was Saint Cloud's, but it is, it is different than what.
And what does Wade Park have?
Um, the same.
Same.
Same one. So I'm not opposed to you saying it's, we can still have more discussion on it. Doesn't need to be passed. If anybody wants to buy it, then go to Wade Park or Saint Cloud right now so you can have more discussion. I also am in agreeance with you, though, is you don't want to limit business coming in, but where does the business go and how does it zone? I look under, you know, six fourteen zero-seven, the procurement of the license has a lot to do with the chief as well, correct?
Yeah, if you background.
Background checks, everything else. Together, they recommend the, the issues of, or denial, but then it goes to the report of recommendation of the chief of police. Should be considered and acted upon by the council to prove or deny. So it goes through them as well to understand due diligence of, is this business legit or not? One thing I do like about it too is it's not going to be a transient business, which means can't be a movable place of business.
Food truck.
Can't be a food truck, can't be there. Any business conducted from a permanent structure for a period of less than six consecutive months can't be that either. So they need to be there for a year. So legitimate business, if they do legitimately want to sell it, have a lot of hoops to jump through in my eyes through the procedure. That's just my thoughts, so.
You know, in the sake of not induce or relinquishing any debate or argument on it, I'd like to move the table this until we get our legal opinion on our differences of what the law is.
Well, legal did look at it and has approved it.
Yeah.
Of what it says.
Well, we don't have to approve it. We're still under moratorium.
Correct.
You know, and contrary to what Mr. Kluzner thinks, I believe, or Rich thinks, we do have to allow it in some areas according to what I, well, what I know about the state law.
We don't.
Well, that's, you know.
And based on.
That's a question.
No, I don't think it's a question if, if, I'm fairly certain, and we can discuss it all you like, but we don't have to approve anything.
No.
But we, we don't have to approve this and we don't have to sell it here. There are a dozen, dozen cities or maybe two dozen cities that have approved it. There are eight hundred and fifty-four cities, and I would bet eight hundred of them haven't done anything. And they don't intend to. They're under the moratorium and they're going to continue under the moratorium until something becomes more clear. So I don't think we're forced to do anything because of that.
No, not yet.
Well.
Unless somebody comes forward and says.
Until the legislature says you have to allow it. And they're not saying that right now. They're saying they give the city the authority to allow it. And that's what this does. It makes us restrict it to our own ordinance, where we can sell it, how it has to be licensed, who gets the background check, all those other things. I mean, Austin, I think I sent Austin's ordinance for allowing it, and Fairmont has the same thing, and I'm sure cities down the metro area are doing the same thing. I'm, there, I don't really, one way or the other. What you're missing is the fees are covering our costs. It's things like sales tax and opening a business that are repetitive in this area that would affect our economy because we collect sales tax and we would also, or the tax on this, we'd also have some business in town doing business, bringing people in and stuff like that. I'm not worried about hurrying through this at all. And Jeff and I had this conversation because, and I'm, rather than mayor reports, I'm going to bring it up now, at the League of Minnesota Cities Board of Directors meeting, the current, I'm, I'm going to deviate a little bit and I apologize, but the League of Minnesota Cities knows that this is a prominent issue today, THC edibles. But also on the docket for new legislation session is legalizing marijuana. And they're two different entities entirely. THC edibles come from.
Hemp.
Hemp, which is mostly synthesized. And legalizing marijuana is from the plant itself. And the thought behind both the intergovernmental organization at League of Minnesota Cities and the, some of the senators, rep, or senators and representatives is that if they choose to legalize marijuana, then they're going to throw away the THC hemp stuff because they're not going to do two flavors of it. It's going to be one and only one. At the same time, the league recommends that we do something. In case a business does want to start, we can, we can monitor it and control it some way, knowing that in the future, we maybe have to throw it away and start again because, again, this is from intergovernmental at League of Minnesota Cities saying they're not going to do both. They're going to do one or the other, but it's a bad place to be to not do anything and wait.
Well, and again, I think this, this gives us more control than not.
It does. It gives us good control.
I mean, there's a lot of hoops to jump through, and anything that wants to come through has to come through this council first with a decision of yes or no.
Even if, even if we did this, it doesn't mean there's a, and I, maybe this is a Even if, even if we did this, it doesn't mean there's a, and I, maybe this is a Nate or Jeff for question, is there people knocking at the door waiting to start selling this stuff? I don't know, but I don't think there's a demand out there right now, I don't, but.
Yeah, I haven't, I've heard one inquiry, and that was just regarding where the city's at in the process.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the same with things like THC infused drinks. That will change, the landscape will change to that as well when legalizing marijuana will change. So I think it's a bad position to wait and see what happens because you never know what the legislation is going to do, and we want to be in a better control than just waiting. At the same time, you know, I'm six one, half dozen the other, I don't, I don't think it's a, I don't think there's any pent up demand to start selling it, knowing that legalization of marijuana is on the, on the very forefront.
And I think even if we approve this, I don't think you're going to have our doors come knocking down.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so either.
Do it, but I think it gives you more control.
I think there's a lot of investment that people have to take, and they're taking a wait and see attitude on what's going to happen in the next legislative session with legalizing marijuana, it's kind of that, the, the, um, news media that, that's been presented. So I don't think there's anybody knocking down the doors to try and sell this, knowing that in six or eight months, they're going to have to change their whole mode. So, um, there's a motion and a second to move forward with.
Motion, yeah, considering adopting orders.
Twenty twenty-two twelve establishing the ordinance. Okay, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails. Push to the table. May, well, there wasn't a second on the motion to table. So, and that would have taken precedent, but we didn't get that, good.
So what can we do now?
Well.
It's two, two.
It's, we can make another motion, but that one failed, we're not adopting that resolution.
Right.
What's the next agenda item?
Very good. Item seven, engineering.
Good evening. Uh, council, in the packet is a memo from engineering relative to, uh, the flow monitoring, uh, exercise that we were conducting over the last, actually, two months, uh, on Birch Street.
That's kind of interesting data.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, it is.
No, it doesn't look like a switch.
You got it up there?
There we go.
Okay, thank you. Um, so yes, the memo's in the, in the council's packet regarding the, uh, the results of that flow monitoring period. So just as a refresher, uh, the twelve inch sewer on Birch Street, kind of mid-block to south of the Quick Trip, was our, um, manhole, uh, you could say monitoring point. So this little red triangle here represents the location of where we sampled. And, uh, so that, this was an inline device that monitored the flow passing over, uh, over the sensor for two months. Oops, let me switch to a different map. One of the things I wanted to, to impress upon, uh, with the council, so the, the results of that, when we compare the, the calculated capacity of what that pipe should have, and then compare that to what we were monitoring on average over, over the two-month period, would suggest we have capacity in, in the pipe. Uh, and, and on average, it was about eighty-two percent, uh, remaining capacity in that pipe. The reason that's important is, is I didn't, while it was good news or positive news that we've got a fair amount of capacity to work with, one of the more significant planning elements, or I think the next step that we have to entertain before you conclude, we have a lot of unused pipe capacity, is the fact that, and that's why I wanted you to see this map on the screen. Uh, so those green lines represent, uh, the sanitary sewer network, and you can kind of see from the black arrows and the green lines what all makes its way down to this point. So all of these pipes serve, uh, the Park Terrace, Clinton Village, uh, uh, parts of the, I think, the, the Townsite Edition, as well as the College of St. Benedict and the Sisters of St. Benedict monastery. And that's important or significant because, uh, as you saw in the memo, one of the bigger components to the flow is what comes from the College of St. Benedict's. Um, and so having an understanding of what their enrollment looks like today versus what their forecast could be, staffing levels, all of those things will play into how much should we be either reserving or, or understanding could come down that pipe at, at some point in the future. And so, um, that would be our recommendation, at least as a next step. Nate and I have talked a little bit about getting some additional information from the college to analyze what's happening with enrollment, staffing levels, et cetera, at least in the forecast period. And take that into account to, to determine, do we really have eighty-two percent that we have to work with? Or do we really have, you know, fifty percent to work with, for example? So, uh, that's the next step, but I guess we wanted to provide an update after two months of monitoring. Um, it would certainly suggest we have capacity to work with. And I think we need to do a little bit more planning before we conclude, we can allocate it elsewhere. So.
Question? Yeah.
Yeah, so with the rema-.
Yeah, go ahead.
Remaining capacity, so how would that project into a, an addition, an additional development to the west on that? So what type of facility or how much of a structures could you put out in that area for that pipe to handle?
I thought you might ask that question.
Okay. Well, that's, that's the reason to have the study done.
Yes, well, so.
Randy, before you get there, can you, while you're thinking about that, can you compare to a single line to that versus the, the master plan we have?
Yes.
You're going to get there, okay.
Yes, and so the map that I have up, this is actually from two thousand ten, so, uh, as, as I think many of you are aware, this wasn't a new idea or we've been, this was something had been contemplating for some time. This, it's a little probably tough for you to see, that, that blue magenta boundary. We, we tracked it back to where the, the city's water treatment plant is, the Sterns Electric Facility, and then what we have traditionally understood to be, you know, the gateway parcel, the gateway development, and then even a portion of the sister of St. Benedict's property here to the east. Now, what had been excluded back in two thousand ten was the understanding that the, the Big Woods or the monastery would not ever develop. And so consequently, we've never, uh, at least since two thousand ten, accounted for any wastewater flow being generated by development in this area. But, uh, this flow, and, and again, the other detail here, that's a little bit engineering talk, uh, the two thousand gallons per day, or per acre per day is a planning number that we'll use, uh, for, for heavy or for commercial. So residential, by comparison, we might plan anywhere from six hundred gallons to fifteen hundred gallons per acre per day. And as you might guess, commercial, bigger user, big of water. So, again, contemplating a commercial development land use, um, this gets to be about just under nine hundred gallons per minute of flow, based on those flow values in this land use area. If you go back to the memo, hydraulically, we are estimating seven hundred, seven hundred eighty gallons per minute of, of capacity. So, wanted to give you maybe an idea in terms of reconciling, so we may not be able to serve everything that I just showed, uh, in blue, but we would be able to serve a, a good portion of that if we truly had eighty-two percent of, of capacity in that pipe. So, that's why I guess I wanted to reinforce this, it's important for us to understand what might happen at the St. Ben's campus or the Sisters campus before we, we zeroed in on eight hundred, nine hundred gallons per minute.
That all depends on the density of a, uh, development out there, too.
Yeah, there's, there's several moving parts, right? Uh, how, how dense, how wet are the, the land uses? Um, and then what, what can happen at the campuses? So, um, that gives you a little bit of a flavor. The other thing I guess I'd highlight, at least with this map, you know, when we've talked about the big pipe or the trunk sewer that would originate at the main pump station and work its way south towards the interchange, the area that you can see in blue, uh, you're, you're not going to be able to take on any other area. So if, if this was what you planned for in terms of a service area for a pump station, you're not going to be able to take on any area north or west of this site. So, finite amount of capacity.
County to west, nothing. That would be some other main.
Another approach, yeah, whether we're, we're bringing in the big pipe or we're pumping, you know, putting another pump station and pumping someplace, but.
Okay.
So that's a, I, I guess a bit of a preview for, for the council. Like I said, I think next step, we need to do a little bit more work, um, before we zeroed in or concluded what the capacity is.
But it does give us some leverage on saying, we have some capacity out there.
Right.
How that's used, and working with CSP to determine numbers on.
How much we should return, yep.
On campus, because I don't see them expanding or enrollment changing very much, so.
Yes.
Okay, okay, I get that. Other questions for Randy? Anything else?
That's it.
Very good, thanks, Randy, that's very good stuff. Item eight, uh, let's go to department reports, administration.
All right, I've got a few items here I'd like to report on. Um, first one, uh, thank you, Councilman McClusner and, and Lori also for, uh, your work on the crew with its, uh, doing the capital campaign for the community center. Um, we've had two meetings now, our last meeting, um, was, was a little bit more focused, a little bit more talking about techniques and strategies towards, um, uh, getting the commitments from, from donors that are interested in the project. There's a, a good, a good amount of data available to, to utilize, to, to tap, to do the best job we can to, uh, communicate the need and the opportunity for, for donations. One of the, one of the topics was discussed was the, the, the fact that the YMCA is intended to be, uh, uh, an efficient economical community center. And I think it's important for this group to really identify how the YMCA can work as a community center, uh, because the model is very efficient and is very economical for the community and sustainable. But we as a staff and also this, this group wants to make sure that it operates as a community center and has that community center feel which everyone, um, really aspires to. So that's our, that's our hopes here. Um, I'll be attending or going to the YMCA facility in St. Cloud to get a flavor for that. And then I'll be comparing some of what I learned there against what I've learned as operating a community center in Monticello for over twenty years, to get a feel for how would the YMCA feel or operate like, like a community center that isn't operated by a YMCA. So I'm looking forward to contributing best I can in that respect. Um, some other things that have gone, Adam has registered for the newly elected training offered by LMC, so he's getting geared up for that, and we're working, they're starting to work on our orientation, hope that is ready by the time he's on board. Charlene Stevens has indicated that we have twelve, um, candidates so far, and at pretty early stages for the position of city administrator, so that seems to be going very well. She's casted a net pretty far and wide, and it's, it's yielding some good results. Uh, I wanted to mention too that, uh, as you know, I've been taking a lot of input from individuals within the organization and council to get some ideas on some goals and aspirations, some great individual input. And with that, um, also getting some input that there's a, there is a kind of a, a desire to gain an understanding of these items, talk about them, have a workshop, and then maybe get some prioritization going, you know, add to the list, shape the list, and then have a document that everyone, um, feels good with, good about, to then, um, help the new city administrator kind of make that kickoff into, to that, to the career here in St. Joe. So I've done this in Monticello a number of times at different stages of development of the city. Um, uh, it's, it's a, it's a fun process, and it does, it's, um, something that I look forward to doing. So that isn't necessarily on my list of priorities that, that I signed up for when I came in, but I think it's something that could be helpful for the group, and I'm, I'd be excited to, to assist in that way. So I'm going to proceed in that direction. Um, there was one question, maybe the city administrator needs to, to work on the prioritization, but on the other hand, I think the kind of consensus I'm hearing is that, you know, this will be a good starting out point that the new city administrator can shape. Due to a recent, the snowstorm, the, the LMC meeting, the area meeting was, was rescheduled to January seventeenth at three o'clock, and that's, that's what's going on. Um, and, uh, so we're going to retool and have that visit, uh, in the, in the future, uh, on January seventeenth. Another, uh, change that isn't a huge change, but I think it's good for the long-term kind of health of the compensation program and the way its staff is managed, and it could be positive for everyone. We're going to be shifting employee reviews to, uh, from October each year to an anniversary of employees. Um, and that I think is more common than once a year for everyone. We're going to be, um, giving opportunities for each staff person to evaluate their job description, see where it's changed, and see where it's the same, and then always have a touch point each year to develop positions over time, um, and then document it so that you can keep your house in order instead of having to make major changes every five years, let's do it incrementally. There's going to be requirement that the city administrator sign off on all step increases, and this isn't necessarily a change because I think I saw it in some of your documentation, but I think that's really important that the city administrator signs off on increases so that everyone, there's someone responsible for making sure people are treated consistently across, across the, uh, city for step increases. And also, this could be at, at some point, a potential idea for the, for the personnel committee. In some cities, the personnel committee ratifies that or is aware of it so they know that that's being done. So that is something to talk about in the future. And then just update the evaluation form, so some of these items are documented and are taken care of. So it's more administrative changes that I look forward to getting going first of the year. The pay equity RFP that you approved for distribution last week's not out the, or two weeks ago, it's not out the door yet, but it's been written and I'm kind of vetting it, so I hope to get that out, um, soon. Uh, fire contract and process meeting with Doug Fredrickson tomorrow. YMCA lease agreement, um, Lori's done a great job with Therese too, and Greg, that it's got fairly far along, but we're hoping to get that completed so that when the campaign committee does its work, it's with the knowledge that a lease agreement has been set up. All right, with that, I just have some, a couple other points that I won't, um, continue on with here. Wanted to mention one thing, um, last thing though, is that I'm getting, I'm getting some good, nice feedback from, uh, council that, um, as far as staff attendance at meetings, we could use more discretion as to when staff is here and when staff isn't, and that we would have the liberty to grant staff time to, to stay home or do something else. Um, and that the city administrator, if the item, for items are on consent agenda, whatever, that you, staff person doesn't have to be here for every meeting, but we certainly will play that by ear, and, uh, won't take liberties with that. Yeah, so anyway, I think enough said on that.
We should talk to you.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So with that, that's all I have, thank you for bearing with me on those items.
Yes, good evening, mayor, members of the council. So, uh, quick, quick synopsis of my report here, please stop me with any questions. So economic development, our meeting tomorrow, we'll have discussion on JR Mobile, Boutique Hotel, twenty twenty-three priorities, and then also kind of a recap of twenty twenty-two and just some of the retention and expansion, um, that we did with meeting with some of the businesses. Interest in the industrial part continues to be significant, so, uh, we're hoping that some of those pieces fall into place and, and get those developments out there. Planning, so we did cancel our planning commission meeting this month, and three members are coming off the commission, so if you know of someone, please let them know and spread that word out there. Enforcement continues from rental ordinances to, uh, wood stoves and parking and other violations. That continues to take up time. Meetings and events, I attended a Central Minnesota Regional Housing Forum on December first, and also that same day, we had some housing discussion with area representatives and leaders of the Somali community. Jeff and the mayor were also in attendance for that one. On December sixth, I met with Sheri Wagner, who's Executive Director of Connectability, which is a local nonprofit. They do a variety of different things, but one of the items that they have is a grant for individuals who do not have transportation in the community. So that can be in the form of getting transportation to medical appointments, to, uh, work commitments. Uh, individuals can apply for that, so we did post that on our social media to just help spread the word. Also included a link in the department report here. On the eighth, I listened to presentations from CSP SJU students regarding downtown parking and development of East Park. So students did a fantastic job with that. So students did a fantastic job with that research. So hoping to get copies of their reports and that and share them with like the planning commission park board. And then on December fourteenth, we had an affordable housing discussion with the Central Minnesota Housing Partnership. And then our meeting that was supposed to occur on the fifteenth of December with CLC Partners regarding twenty-fourth got rescheduled to this Wednesday. So other than that, that's all I have. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Yep. December nineteenth, JR Mobile owner had till today.
Yeah, great question.
And?
Yep, I figured you'd ask that. So they had to today. So essentially what we will be doing is our attorney will be filing a notice to the court tomorrow. And then with that filing, the court will set a hearing date. We're not sure when that hearing date is going to occur, just given the, where the courts may be. And then once a hearing date is established, then it's likely that the court will give the owner additional time to comply, whether that's thirty days, forty-five days, it's undetermined. And then after that date has passed, then the city can go and solicit quotes to raise the building. So there is still processes, but we are moving as fast as we can on that.
And then I've got one more. Your meeting, obviously, for the connectability for transportation. I know we talked about it before. What's the hang up with like Metro Bus not being able to come out here? I know we talked about.
So it's a cost, yeah.
For the city, correct?
Yeah, it's a significant cost for the city and also the Department of Transportation kind of regulates a lot of the fixed route services and that's a tough process to change.
Sounds good. I just had a.
Well, the routes are controlled by Metro Bus.
Right.
The last time I met with them, we had dedicated routes, but it cost about eight hundred thousand to a million dollars just to buy into their system.
Okay. I just had a couple, I know we have a couple of group homes out.
And that was their best price.
Really? Yeah, we just, I had a couple of group homes in our area reach out to us to talk to.
Well, we, surrounding on Seventh, and I think Country Manor uses, it's not dialerized.
Tricap?
Tricap, yeah.
Yeah.
They have a special contract with them.
You know, we've got one home over in our area from a nonprofit, Opportunity Matters, and then there's one over to, I think kind of over by you, that's there too, that was just reaching out to discuss other opportunities.
I'm not, again, I'm not sure what the contract looks like with those, but Tricap seems to be a viable alternative for their, they have Tricap, it's surrounded like three or four times a day. So it's almost like a dedicated route.
Yep.
And I think if we could get Tricap to visit downtown St. Joe on a regular basis, that would solve our Metro Bus problem.
That's all I had.
Okay, perfect.
Nate, I'm interested in the December eighth presentation from CSP students.
Yeah.
Parking, development. Seems like that's been an ongoing discussion with us and I would hope you'd have more information that you just met with them.
Yeah, definitely. So basically the students looked at quantitative and qualitative scenarios for both of the downtown parking, so.
What students?
The students from SBU, S J U.
What?
What class?
What, yeah, was it geography or?
Yeah, it was an environment. It was a, yep, environmental policy class actually through the public affairs.
Okay.
Yep, so they looked at different segments of the downtown, went out different times of the day, different days of the week, did a quantitative count of parking spaces in that area, what was taken up, what was still empty for spaces. The highest that they saw was like sixty-four percent of spaces near the stretch of like Bello Caccino and that area were taken at peak time. In a lot of other areas, they, there was even less than that.
We could have done that. We could have figured that one out, but.
Yeah.
So what is it, what was their goal?
So what really the goal was to just look at the parking demand in the downtown and what was used for spaces and then also what could be potential solutions to different things.
What were their solutions?
Well, we had some discussion on the parking lot that the church owns and.
That's going nowhere. What else?
Yeah.
Well, I'm serious. We've had that discussion, you know. I mean, Randy, we've done this a couple of times, haven't we?
Terms of configuration or.
Yeah. So I mean, I don't have any problem doing it, but I just, I'd like more details than just you met with them.
Yeah, so.
We've been looking at parking for many years.
Yeah.
And we're still going to look at it. So if there's an active group trying to get their input into us, they should cover that to us, not just you.
Yep, nope, I don't disagree with that. So that's one thing that we talked with, with the professor, was actually having them come and present to the planning commission and council for next time. So we do have, we are going to get copies of their research reports and, you know, their data and everything like that. The presentations that they did were, you know, ten-minute, fifteen-minute presentations, so.
Let's get them right here. I mean, I don't have any disrespect to the planning commission, but the ultimate decision is going to be us. And I mean, planning commission can make a recommendation, but it's ultimately going to end up here. And we've been talking about this for many years. If they have some worthwhile evidence that they could, we could change something. And Randy, I would hope that you were part of that presentation or could have offered some response to what they had because you've done the same research a couple of times, or SEH has. And I don't know if you were or weren't, but those kind of connections, networking is beneficial. It's not just one group doing it. It's the council and Randy and what we've been worked on in the past. It's.
Yeah, so that, the goal of that is to share and distribute that research and that information. So I'm just letting the council know that, you know, the students did conduct the research, that they presented that research in their class as per that assignment and then hope to get more traction with their actual research data.
And if I could jump.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think what Nate said intended to be the end of the story, it's really kind of telling you that this has been done. And now we actually have been contacted by the Church of St. Joseph regarding that parking space as well. And so now we're starting to develop, I mean, additional information and we have to bring it all together and figure out, okay, you know, what's the best way to fully understand it and then, and then make decisions based on that, that data. So this is, this is, I mean, obviously you've been grappling with this and we're starting to get a base of data now where we can make some good decisions, I think.
Yeah. Well, number one, we never, I never knew that they were doing anything, which would have been nice to know before this.
Yeah, I mean, this is something.
I don't know that they came out of the blue and said, hey, we did this.
No, so this is really something that started when Matt Lindstrom, the professor, and I just sat down and started to brainstorm, well, you know, what could be of value to the students? So that was a collaboration that was really outside of the day-to-day stuff that we're involved in, but it's really trying to give the students value and worth while at the same time looking at some issues or concerns that are going on from a city perspective, especially from a planning and environmental perspective. So like East Park, they looked at different environmental things. And so we try to ensure that they're connecting their studies with a real-world situation and data to go with that, so.
Do they have a solution?
Well, before you, before you ask that, I think this type of activity would be best vetted before it comes to a final conclusion of we met, we did all these things and it's been going on for several months and I don't know anything about it, or the council doesn't know anything about it. I think, number one, I think you should have brought business into it as well, not just the students at some point. At some point, we need to bring business into this. When, we've talked to business, Randy, we've talked to business before about parking. So it's, I think it's isolated. I think it's a good work. There's no doubt about the students are doing good work and you're making a great connection, but at some point, that information and what you're doing at the detail level has to be shared with us.
Correct, yep, in the form of the research reports that they are.
I think even before that, what are you doing and why are they doing it and what's a good benefit and how does it fit? I mean, it shouldn't come to us as a, we did all these things for two months and here's the report and we're going to meet, have them meet. I think it would be good for a council member to even listen along.
We'll talk about building relationship between the colleges and the city.
It's not just, again, it's not just community development. It's in the entire picture. So this is a surprise to me that we've gone this far and I don't know anything about it. And not, that is not good, but at the same time, it's a surprise. Especially when SEH hasn't been involved and we've, you know, we've enlisted SEH a couple of times in how to change parking downtown. So I'd like to really know more about what is coming here, only because we know it's a sore point or a sticking point with downtown. We really know that and businesses have reached out to us. How do we manage it? So I really.
Well, I, I think.
I think it's a good thing. At the same time, I think the process could have been modified a little bit so we understood a little bit more about what's going on.
I think, to your point, I think it was a, an idea, right? Good thing for a class, but I think it can evolve into so much more kind of like to what you're saying. So even if it's like the first kind of go-around, maybe it's something that you're doing continuously and it evolves more than just this.
Yeah, yeah. And ultimately, that's, yeah, ultimately, that's a great point. That is the goal, is to start that as a collaboration, but build from that. The tough thing is there's different classes every semester and, you know, how do we manage that, so.
So my question, Nate, was just how did the meeting come about?
Yeah.
And it sounds like it was St. Ben's, Professor Matt, that approached you and said, hey, we're going to do this study. Do you want to engage with us? You didn't pick up the phone and call the college to say, we need a study on parking.
No, it was just.
Went the other way.
Yeah, it was just, it was a collaboration in the sense of the professor reaching out and then him and I kind of just brainstorming. What could we connect them to with real world? Yeah.
And I'm with everything that the mayor said regarding this topic.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Thanks, Nate. Very good. Fire department. What kind of an order?
Good evening. Just a monthly report. Call volume is still up. We're at five, well, we're at five eighty-six as of last, as of the thirteenth. Today we're at six hundred. Last year we were at five forty-two for the year, so. Yeah, but a few days ago, so we'll be a record high again this year. Membership, our four new members will start fire one, fire two hazmat after the first of the year. They already have their medical done. Possibly, we're going to do interviews tomorrow night, but due to the icy conditions behind the fire hall, part of the agility test, we're going to have to move that out to, as a safety precaution. Pumper tanker, nothing new on that. Our grass rig replacement, the fire board did approve to move forward with replacing that. We did order the chassis. Probably won't see that till August of twenty twenty-three with production issues. We did also order the pump system that goes on the truck. North Central will be installing that. Fire study, finished up all the material that they need of right now. We had a meeting last Thursday to discuss a Zoom meeting. They're putting all the material together. They're going to set up a time to come and visit each town for about a day, a day and a half. Grants, couple of grants we did do, I did apply for Stern's Electric Roundup Grant. We did receive our five hundred. And also the Sons of the Legion donated three thousand dollars. Both of those will be going to equipment to offset the costs of the new equipment on the new truck. And we'll continue to look for grants and donations to help offset the costs. And that's about it. The bottom's just a picture of one of the last mutual aid calls in the earth, Cold Spring. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a question for the chief. We're from Lori. So item number three, the pumper tanker that's being delayed. We haven't, we've paid some, but we haven't paid all of it yet, right? We make a final payment when it's delivered?
Correct. We made the payment of the chassis upfront when the chassis was done, which saved us like twelve grand. Otherwise, we don't pay anything until the kids here, so.
Other question?
All right. Thanks, chief. Finance, Lori?
Good evening. So I'm not going to go through each point, but I wanted to touch on a couple of items that are coming up for finance. We are working with Civic Systems, setting our schedule for the software conversion. And it will start in early February. With that, they have our data they're working on, setting up the system with our data in the background. That is involving some questions, kind of going through just basic operations of the system that Vicki's kind of been doing a lot with utility billing, but each module, we're going to kind of go through each point to make sure that we're understanding everything in the system and that they're understanding what we need from them. So we're getting, getting going on that, but with the software conversion happening, it'll go from February till early April. I requested from our auditors to push back our field work until early May. This is going to be very time-intensive for finance staff and actually others in the office as well to get this conversion done. And so trying to do that, get your end on and prepare audit work papers, it's just not feasible to get it all done when we normally would have our field work. So Bergen K to V is our auditors and they are aware of the schedule and are able to accommodate pushing back the field work a little bit on our audit. We have till June thirtieth to have the financial statements audited and approved by council. So we have the timing set up so that we'll still be able to accomplish that state requirement. So those are kind of the two things that I wanted to key in on. I think other reports that others have given that I'm involved in. We're working on those items. I think one thing that Jeff maybe didn't mention is we have negotiations with Ask Me scheduled in January. They, we had a meeting scheduled in November, but it got postponed by the Ask Me. Something came up on their end, so the earliest that we could meet now is in January with everybody. So hoping to continue, make it headway there. But if you have any questions on anything, be happy to entertain.
Go ahead. I do. Lori, on the YMCA lease agreement discussions with the Y, what jumps out is, and we knew this, first two years of operations is proposed to have the city share in the costs. So how do you determine what that will be? And I think we need to be transparent with the city, the residents as to what that's going to look like. Do you have any idea right now or is it just a?
It's going to be a portion of the operations. I don't know the exact performa and Greg is trying to prepare the operational performa and really understand what it's going to take annually for operations. A lot of that's going to depend on what the final building is going to look like. So we're going to try to make some estimates with that. Operating, you know, just the, the community center YMCA that we pre-designed could take anywhere from five hundred thousand up to seven hundred fifty thousand. He shared that operational costs are annually for the St. Cloud YMCA is about a million with the pool, the fuel, the electricity costs that have skyrocketed this year. It's really been difficult to try to get that number down because of a lot of the inflation costs. Some of it is also hiring lifeguards.
So a million a year, does the city of St. Cloud help subsidize the Y in its present form?
I am not positive on that.
We want, we need to know that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not positive on how that was set up. I know that they contribute some into their equipment replacement fund, but I don't know that they're contributing to the operations, the daily operations. I'm not sure.
I just want to understand it. I'm all for the project. I want to see it through. It's going to be great for the community. We just have to know what the potential is for us subsidizing it.
Right, right. We're trying to nail down that number.
Did Greg share with you, he did a performa about two years ago?
Yes, he did, but he said that he's, it's not accurate. It's not accurate in today's costs with what they're seeing. And with what the pre-design is, the numbers that he had aren't matching, so.
That's fine.
So he wasn't even comfortable sharing that data with me, so, because he said it's just not accurate.
We continue to ask him for those numbers and he refuses to share them, so. You got another one?
From the last conversation that I had with anybody, we were, we were going to subsidize the water and the sewer. And that was it. Now we're coming up with different costs.
Well, there's some building maintenance, like any of the outdoor items or the building structure itself. The city will still be responsible for the roof. If interior-wise, you know, like security systems, the, if there's damage to, I don't know, a interior wall or something, that the Y is agreeing that they would take responsibility to. They're, they're, they would take like heating and electricity, those types of costs. But they're asking like the first two years to help because it's going to take a little bit to get everything established. And they said it takes two years really to get it established and then they'll fully take over those other operations. And then they'll fully take over those other operations.
Yeah, first I heard that too.
Scenario.
You may wanna reach out to Matt Stalling to figure out what the contract is between St. Cloud and YMCA. I think. Initially, they've set aside money every year for a portion of years, like ten years. To supplement, not the operations, but the building maintenance stuff, right? And nothing on the operations side, so. Matt would know those numbers. Okay, very good. Anybody else? Questions for Lori? Thank you, Lori. Uh, public works, verbal update.
Yes, sir.
I like it.
Um, most of you probably realized, we did have a hydrant that was repaired on Fourth and East Minnesota. That was due to a vehicle accident. Uh, so that repair is complete. Uh, Kleinfelter bathrooms, the service doors got, were installed last Friday. The roof is on, about half of the mechanical is in, so it's coming along. Um, can't really give you a projection date, cause who knows what'll happen, but it's getting close. Um, lots of snow out there so far. Uh, I've gone through about a hundred and seventy ton of road seltzer ready this year. That's what I went through all of last year.
What's your point?
Bob, I need that, I need that seventy-five back.
We're gonna dip right into that three ninety-five.
Yeah. Um, but you know, for the most part, the good news is, uh, you know, plow equipment is really holding up, so Derek has done his due diligence. Getting things, uh, getting the equipment uh, prepared and ready for the winter. Um, I am down two front mount brooms. One, uh, one broom decided to take on a commercial vehicle and lost. Um, so that broom is getting replaced and that will be an insurance claim.
Was it a good fight?
What's that?
Was it a good fight?
No. No. Uh, my second broom, uh, did go down early this year. Um. I, I really didn't feel like spending a whole lot of money on it. I went to Eichler and had some parts made for it. It lasted one more snowfall and it completely blew apart. Main shaft is bent, both sprockets are bent. Chain has broke off, gearbox blew out, so I'm gonna, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to.
Come on, get Derek on there. Let's go.
Purchase a new, it's, it's about thirty-five hundred dollars worth of parts. Yeah. Um, yeah, so that's uh, for winter equipment. Uh, Sun Hill is getting used a lot, so that's a good thing. Uh, we are still in the process of making ice. Of course, the wet snows, uh, last week slowed us down a little bit. However, we do have the warming house open on a regular basis for the slutters. We did get a chance to make a little bit of ice today. Uh, tomorrow should be a good day to make ice. Um, as far as upcoming meetings, uh, we tend to have regular staff meetings, uh, monthly semulia. Park Board, City Council, and Safety Churning. Pending any questions?
Anyone? Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Police, Chief?
Certainly. So this is a little bit more of a technology overview, I guess, on this report. Um, the Verkata cameras that we've uh, authorized to go ahead and install have started going up. I think we've kind of slowed down a little bit with cold weather. They must be fair weather installers, so, which I don't blame them, being up on a ladder, trying to put stuff on buildings. So they are, uh, on, some of them are already on the mill stream building, some of them are already on the Wolfbeak on Trailhead. I do not believe there's any on the water tower yet. Um, or into that area. Two, and water treatment plant two, the new one is complete as well. So um, I haven't, uh, we, it's actually just sent through today a partial payment, uh, request for what they've gotten done so far. As far as the body cameras go for the police department, um, there's a little bit of a communication, um. I don't know if you wanna call it a dance, so to speak, between Sterns County's information technology to communicate with the state of Minnesota. It's mostly on the backend that once we deploy the cameras and there's an actual recording that we can get it. Into the building to get transferred to court, because once we have those recordings available. And somebody has a data request, we have to get it to them within a reasonable period, so we can't just buy the cameras and put them out on the street and start recording. Unless we have a way to transfer it, redact information, so they're getting this process all in place.
What's, what's a reasonable?
Well, I'm hoping actually, and that's exactly what I put in here. I'm hoping that we're gonna see these on the street before spring. Um.
But if someone.
Oh, as far as data requests?
Yeah.
So according to what Mary's found out in the past is they've been told approximately thirty days or less is reasonable, so. Which isn't bad, actually, but you know, in the case, at one of the presentations I was at in the last few years. Uh, the city of Duluth went, had officers at a fight call and there was ten officers at it. Um, they said that the amount of information that was recorded between five squad cars and ten officers was a huge amount of information. And they had a blur of faces of juveniles and everything else, so this stuff does get a little bit, you know. It takes up a lot of staff time, so. But there is also, like the mayor talked about recently too, there's the flip side of it where it does also cut down on some of our liability or exposure. It exonerates officers that are falsely accused and stuff, so there's, there's a lot of pros that go with it, so. Um, as far as uh, calls going, oh, Bob was looking for numbers for quite a while, um, so I did include this. Unfortunately, I couldn't get it into our packet in time, cause Mary was out last week at the beginning of the week and I was out at the back end of the week. A report like this here, she's got about two and a half to three hours into this report to generate something like this here, cause when you just print it out. It doesn't come as nicely laid out like this here, and she's gotta go through and take out duplicates and condenses down to get it into six pages, otherwise it'll come out in twelve to fifteen or so. Um, I did throw in here a couple uh, that you might wanna just look at and obviously if, while you guys go through this, if you have further questions. Just call me or let me know. Um, Mary can probably go through these a little bit more clear than I can. But it's pretty common sense when you see like in twenty twenty-one, we did fifty-four public urinations and in twenty twenty-two to date, we've done twenty-nine. Those calls are down. Um, however, when you start looking at behavioral health calls, in which everybody sees in the news, and you start going from sixteen to thirty-four, and that's doubled. My point to that, that I point to this is, it takes far less staff time to do a public urination than it does a behavioral health calls. I mean, it's. Generally multiple officers and everything else, so, and thefts are up and everything else that you'll see in here, so. You can go through it. Like I said, if anybody has any questions after you've trussed through it, definitely reach out to me.
I can't ask you now?
Well, you can try. I guess I can shoot from the hip.
We're here.
Theft, looks like it's doubled.
Right.
What's, what do you see more theft of? I know we had a.
I wouldn't know specifically what these are, but I would suspect a lot of them are car frowlers. We're seeing a lot of that, so.
And then just one for gun, applicant gun permit purchase from three to thirty-one. Is that someone that doesn't have a permit?
So basically, if you want to purchase a gun, that goes through us. If you want to carry a gun, that goes to the county. So anybody that lives inside the city limits of St. Joe that wants to go out and purchase a handgun, not a long gun, but a handgun, they've gotta come in and fill out a permit to uh, purchase. And that's what we've actually tasked Candy with at the front window, that in the past, Mary has had to stop doing any kind of reports and transcriptions. To process the, the guns and people were calling and saying, hey, it's been two, three weeks. I haven't seen anything back. I wanna go to Shields and buy a gun. Well, Candy's been tasked with this.
So that's just up, just because we have clarity now?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
So Dwight, on page four of six, towards the bottom, it says door check.
Correct.
From one to thirty-one, what's a door check?
So most of the times what this will end up being is um, somebody that's out just on a nightly checking business checks or whatever else. Um, and it can all be, so some of this might be a little bit skewed if an officer. Um, somehow has dispatch coded differently than what it was in the past. And this could be a different dispatcher. Some might call it a business assist, some might call it a door check. So that's why overall, it's kind of hard to know if, if a different dispatcher is throwing it in different uh, categories.
Okay. And then on page five, two thirds of the way down, school contact. It's about the same year to year. Is that when we send a cop to Kennedy every morning?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
What is uh, your NA on page five there? Two oh two to two oh nine? Everything?
It doesn't count for anything else.
Anything smaller?
Anything you can't figure out.
Your guess would be as good as mine right now. I have no idea what that code would stand for.
We need a few more categories, we need more categories.
Right.
Hey, Chief, do you wanna talk about the meeting we had with the deans on like the seventh or sixth? You know, I noticed liquor consumption under twenty-one and the issues we've had. Do you wanna address that at all?
Yeah, and I, I thought it was a very good meeting. Um, so.
It really was.
The, the first of the month, we always meet with um, both security directors, both deans to both campuses. We usually have uh, one of the lieutenants from the shares department attend. And we, we brainstorm between the mayor and myself about relations and how things are going and everything else. And one of the biggest. Concerns that we've had recently has been the underage consumption, the amount of false IDs that are present, and what kind of deviant behavior goes back to college with these kind of activities. And then it all, also gets onto the link bus, which then skews back into St. John's, and so we're just trying to figure this all out. And so I had both sergeants attend this meeting. We actually had our city attorney, our prosecuting attorney attend this meeting as well, so we had a very good attendance. Uh, and Jeff was there as well. Um, so what, what really came out of it is, is um, everybody's acknowledged that this is definitely a concern. Um, how we get to curb it is gonna be a different story because technology is so far ahead. Uh, they refer to these as mostly as novelty IDs or, you know, basically it's not considered. Um, something that's supposed to be represented, but how people use it is completely different, so. We're just trying to figure out where we're at, um, and with enforcement and everything else, so. Um, what else?
Just gonna interrupt quick. So the underage consumption is, is being um, dogged by fake IDs. Where you can buy online and they're so good, vouchers can't figure it out, owners can't figure it out. I mean, police have a tough time figuring it out. And so they're way ahead of our, our ability to stop it and even enforcement. We, you know, there's no way we can actually enforce it, so. We're looking at other means on how to enforce it outside of city means, which is really college, campus. You know, if you get caught with underage consumption, then they can do more than really we can.
Right.
And it, but in addition, we're looking at means how we can get ahead of the curve in identifying them. It's just that the, the industry is so far ahead of us trying to stop it.
And, and the nice thing about it too is, is, you know, even though one of the deans was concerned that maybe the council should take more uh, authority in trying to curb this. Sergeant Johnson did reach out ahead of time to several college towns, and this is not unique to St. John. We're, we're not the only ones, you know, walking this thing. This is just. Like Rick said, it's, it's.
That technology is so advanced.
It is.
To where we can actually detect it.
Years ago, you could fold the false IDs in half and the laminate would pop off. Now the holograms are in it. They've got raised letterings. They've got everything in there. I mean, it's.
If you look at your ID, there's a hologram, so even that's there, so.
There's a couple of other things too that I think the group concluded. Um, one was that um. Traditional, traditionally, if there'd been a, a minor consumption and a fake ID, that only the minor consumption would be prosecuted. And, but the fake ID would be just waived, so now the, the, the tenor's changing. It's like, you know what? It's bad enough. We're not gonna plead these out anymore, so that will help.
One of the things the state did to step in to help as well is if you actually use a fake ID to represent you. And you get charged for it, it will come with a, did they say a sixty or a ninety day license revocation?
Revocation, yeah.
So if that word travels that using a fake ID will also lose your license for a period of time, that, that would also be another separate fine. And the other thing too is, is all of my officers have to operate on probable cause. And it goes right back to the colleges. They can use mere suspicion. If one of their students is acting out and they suspect something on campus, they can take their own administrative steps towards curbing this behavior as well, so.
So a fake ID can be discovered, but it's only after there's a crime committed. You can't discover it when someone enters the, the establishment. You only discover it after you've had to process them for doing something wrong. So the, the ID doesn't really help that mu- I mean, you still could get them, but it's only after they've done something that's.
Correct.
Yeah, let them go in and buy them a drink.
Yeah.
No, that's what, just kidding, don't do that. Yeah, Kevin.
So when I was a student, we didn't have fake IDs, cause the drinking age was eighteen. So can we just unilaterally as a city, lower the drinking age to eighteen? Like we're not.
No, you can make it more restrictive, but you can't make it less in state law.
But they raised it to twenty-one because of people like you.
Me too, me too.
And me too.
Any other questions for Chief? Thanks Dwight, thanks going into that. Item ten, do you wanna speak?
I don't know, does anybody wanna talk about Rhonda's report?
Read Rhonda's report.
I don't know, was it there?
Yeah, we're good. I'll, I'm good with it so far. Item ten, mayor and council reports.
Yeah, I can go first if you want to.
You go.
Um, so as most of you know, this is my last meeting and I wanna first of all, thank the staff for all of your knowledge. Um, it has been a pleasure to, in the last seventeen months, which is crazy to see, already seventeen months I've been here. Um, to learn kind of how our city functions. When I wasn't on the council, I had no idea what happened in the city. So thank you for all of your knowledge. You guys are beyond expertise than, than I can ever imagine, and you guys are making the city function. And giving us the tools as a council to be able to make decisions and I can't praise you enough, so thank you very, very much. Um, to Bob, to Kevin, to Rick and to Kelly who's not here. Um, I thank you for appointing me and giving me the opportunity to serve my, my community. Um, it has been, ever since I can remember, Bob, you remember this, since my mom has been on the council, that. Who gave me that spark of local government. Um, and you gave me the opportunity to. Be a part of my, my community and my local government, and I can't thank you enough for that experience and that opportunity. And it has only sparked my interest more to continue to be a servant leader for my community. Um, where I live, for my family, and um, I just, I really wanna thank the four of you for. Trusting me to sit up here with you and to help make decisions for our city that I also live in. So with that, um, it's probably not goodbye for me, because I don't plan to leave the city anytime soon. I plan to raise my family here. I plan to still serve my community. Um, whether that's not here on the council in the next couple of years until I can hopefully run again and maybe come back on, but. My goal is to continue to serve in other aspects. Um, so again, thank you, staff. Thank you, council members. Thank you, mayor, so.
Thanks, John. Well, along those same lines, John, we wanna thank you because you are kind of the epitome of what it's like to. Give your all to the community, the, the service of the, our community, and, and I appreciate everything you've done. I appreciate your. Conversations we've had over the past and the viewpoints you have and the, and the perspectives you bring to this, to the city. And, and just so everybody knows, John's gonna be on the planning commission, so he's not disappearing anytime soon. And uh.
There you go.
Yeah, so. We're gonna keep him involved, and if he wants to get involved in other things as well, you know, John and I've worked on other things like Dollars for Scholars and some of those J C's Lions things, so. We really do, John, you're, you, you just um, give everything you have for the community. We really appreciate that. I mean, I really appreciate that. Um, two things that I have, um, Dave, and I don't know if I mentioned this or not, Dave Unmack made it official. The executive director of League Minnesota Cities is retiring in May. And so the executive committee will start search and hope to fill that sometime in March, just like we're going through a city administrator's search. Um, uh, he's gonna leave a really big hole. He's been there for seven years and Dave is really, really good. And um, did, I don't know, I, I might have missed it. Jeff, did you note that the December fourteenth meeting was moved?
I, I had it written down.
Okay, it's moved to January seventeenth. Okay, it's, that's the only thing I have. Okay. Any questions? Very good.
Do we have a work session this week? No.
I just.
For some odd reason, I had the twenty-second in my brain. No, okay, good.
Do you think we need to have one? It's like the end of the year and. We can kick off new, we have new, we had new council members coming on.
Slow down, you get behind.
Yeah, okay, so I kinda think we don't need one. Last year, we didn't have one at the end of December either because of the holidays and stuff like that.
Humble.
Okay. Okay, item eleven.
We might have two in one, in an upcoming month to get some of this goal setting done, so we can counter, counteract that.
Okay. Pursuant to item uh, ten, eleven, pursuant to Minnesota State Statute thirteen D O five subdivision three C three. City council will enter into a closed session to discuss terms of, of a purchase agreement for a portion of. PID eighty-four, five three six zero, five three three six zero dot zero 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 six. That was my motion.
Second.
Motion and second, move into closed meeting. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're gonna go into closed session in the conference room, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you all for your notice.
Yep.